Hi Jay.
I'm doing fine. Can you hear me alright?
I hear you just fine.
Okay, now how do I get off of this testing audio screen?
I think you just have to say join with audio.
Okay, just a second. I'll try this. Okay, I did already. Yeah. Well. I don't know.
You still can't get it to go away?
No.
Do you have a share screen button at the bottom?
I think I might have something up here. Gallery view?
Well, gallery view would just put you and I side by side.
Okay.
But at the bottom of your screen, do you have like a little?
Okay, just a minute. There's a share screen here. Okay. Now I can see you.
Okay.
Full screen. No, not full screen, but pretty much.
Okay, so now you could click on the gallery view at the top and then we would be side by side and then as others join, you'll see them pop in that screen too.
Okay. It had me confused there for a minute when I had the password at 169370 email instead of the flyers 4821.
It asked for a different password today?
Well, I used the flyers 482.
Yeah, that's what it should have been.
But there was another password at the bottom of the email.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Said 169370. Same meeting number.
Oh, that's if you're dialing in by phone.
Okay, alright.
I see it there now.
No, it doesn't sound like we're, sound like you and I are gonna be the only ones at the meeting.
Well, it could be a really short meeting.
Good. How long do you think it'll take?
Well, we could just end it right now if it's just the two of us.
I know, but we gotta recognize retirees.
Well, if Lager tries jumping on early, we'll just let him sit in limbo until we want him to join at five minutes to five. How's that?
Oh, I thought we were supposed to be there at four thirty.
Oh, I start the meeting early so that if people are having problems getting connected, we can get that fixed.
Okay, because it said the meeting was starting at some four thirty.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I have to start the Zoom meeting early so that we can be ready at five o'clock.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. Well, I'll let Sharon in.
There. I see a ceiling anyway.
Yep.
Owen Cathy.
Kathy too.
Hi.
Hi lady.
Hi.
Left my plant sale and the last person left and I drove out.
There you go. You're slow down.
Sharon's, well, people come to the door and they ring the doorbell or sometimes they knock and walk in and I thought it's been busy all day, so I expect there'll be people there while I'm supposed to be at the meeting, so.
Okay.
I leave an envelope with about fifteen dollars change that they can make change or steal my fifteen, but no one's ever done that yet, so. I think they feel guilty.
Well, especially when they know what the money's going for.
Oh yeah, but I had a guy, it was thirteen the other day and he handed me ten. Is that good? I said, no, it's thirteen. Ten's not good? And I said, well, you can give me more if you want.
Yeah.
But then I get people that give me a twenty dollar chip too, so.
Hello Julie.
All kinds out there.
All kinds, yeah.
Hi guys.
Hi Sharon.
I already have the meeting started. I'm in the studio.
Are we done?
Oh, are we all done?
Yeah.
Motion that we adjourn.
I can read, I'm recording it here and then I'm just.
You gotta get a different angle on that computer.
Oh, we'll switch.
Well, it's on, but the media doesn't start in five.
Dwayne.
We just have to have the media.
Dane with him? Now you see me?
Suppose you guys want a TV over there?
Phil will see your glasses in your head.
That's all I want to be seen. Do you see Sharon?
Well, she's off to the side.
Well, Julie doesn't show her face, so.
Let's see guys.
Younger face. We need to.
You and Steven. Is Sheila there yet?
I don't know why she's so inhibited about that.
I don't know.
I don't know.
Well, then somebody said maybe it's her internet connection. Maybe she has trouble with that. I don't know. Let's see if there's something that's not quite as high.
Mark said Brad was trying to get in, but he wouldn't let him in yet.
You wanna go out with us?
You hear someone out there.
Face from your lips to your head.
Oh, that's better. There's, I need more inches. That's all that's doing.
We'll pull one of these out. Is that better?
Sharon's better.
Is that better?
We have a better angle. I don't see Sharon.
That's better.
Yeah, I see the right half of you.
We're gonna share the screen. We say that half of each of us was better than the whole thing.
Well, she's the chair, so you need her. I'll just go on it with the resolutions.
Yeah, you've got lots of those.
You'll see enough of me then.
Now, you have to switch the angle on the computer a little bit.
Well, I just got the iPad here.
Oh.
So, we'll move it around. We can go back and forth this way.
Yeah, that'll work.
Yep, that's what we did last time. Yeah. See, I liked it when we had to be taped and we're at the school because it seemed like we were way farther away.
Yes, it was.
Yeah.
So, do you think next month we'll be at the middle school?
Well, we should be.
Yeah. Oh, look at the tree in the back. Windy it is. I know, it's just nuts here too.
Brad's not on yet. Usually he's on first.
He was trying to get on, but Mark wouldn't let him on.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Mark.
Yeah. I gotta grab a cup of coffee. You want a cup of coffee, Jamie?
I got one.
Mark, you going over to the middle school now?
Yeah, I guess I gotta go over there, but.
Well, at least your camera's real good.
My, I was in trouble flipping glasses. I hope I can read this one. I have to ask Julie to give you the big print copy next time. I'm looking at my tabs for reading.
Yeah.
I remember a couple meetings that I, you did that.
Yes, I had them tabbed.
So, I went through last night and highlighted them. Okay, they don't.
To do what I can get rid of and say, so.
Yes, you hear it was Jessie and Kelly, seventy-five to activities scholarship. That was very nice of them. That surprised me.
Yeah.
Did you see the drive around on Friday at the high school?
Yeah, I watched it on the iPad here.
That's pretty neat.
Yeah, it was. They've done a very good job on everything.
Yeah.
You see my pink thing is blossoming out there in the driveway in the.
Oh, yes, I noticed.
I know, so that usually means lilacs will be here next week. Wish they would bloom at the same time. But this only lasts like three days and then everything falls off. Still haven't figured out sure what it is, but that's okay. I just say the pink bush.
What were those pink flowers?
Yeah, well, we've got a bush that was here. There was two of them. That was Dwayne's grandparents, because this is their house. And I've had more people here. I took a branch of it down to the office where Helen McLennan used to work. Nobody can tell me for sure what this bush is. They get the prettiest pink flowers on it. They last for like three days. And then the whole ground is pink.
It's not a weed, is it?
No, it's a shrub.
It's a big shrub.
Okay.
I had one person who said, oh, we had one like that, which is we trimmed everything on the bottom, so it went out more like a tree. And I says, well, this is the way Grandma had it. It's the way I'm leaving it. Because Dwayne tried, there was two of them. He tried moving the smaller one and it made it one year and then it died, so I couldn't touch this one. But right after this is done, then my purple lilacs opened and I said that pink and purple would be so pretty if I could get them at the same time, but
Nope.
Twenty some years, it's never worked.
Wow.
Going to start, no, I don't think so.
Well, at least we got Shelley's name on the. Can't see Shelley at all.
Yeah, this is how we do church every Sunday too, is the internet.
Wait, we were supposed to be on Zoom yesterday for church services? And our pastor had problems with Zoom. Evidently, they're completely full of people using it.
I suppose.
And they couldn't get on, so we didn't have church yesterday.
I'm not sure. I haven't talked to Michael, our minister out here, but I kind of think he maybe does it a couple days ahead of time. And then it's on, you can go either on our church website or you can go on our Facebook page and.
Oh, yeah.
But it's set, so it won't go on earlier than the ten o'clock, but. The marks of their mowing lawn, it's allowed.
Our minister put it on YouTube. And so we've got it on YouTube if we wanna watch it.
Oh, Pam Shilling's coming to get flowers tomorrow for you.
Oh, I just sold the morning, two or three that she hadn't let me know she wanted. I said, well, she hasn't gotten back to me. I don't know. She didn't know what they were.
She was heading to the lake or something and she's gonna stop here for some books if she wants from me. And then she said she was gonna do that on her way to your place to get some.
Well, maybe it's other flowers, because Kara's the one that said she wanted those and then my.
Yeah, she made it to middle school.
What?
Mark made it over to the middle school.
Oh, okay.
He was in his office and then he.
Well, when Julie was here yesterday for me to sign a paper, she said they were gonna be at the middle school, so. Because I actually thought about driving down there instead of going through this, but and I thought, oh, like the heck, save the gas.
Yeah, well. People are at the middle school.
Um, yes, I have.
Myself and Julie right now.
Oh.
Julie.
Okay.
Mucial. Mucial.
So, do we have many people, Mark? Can you tell that have gone on and looked at this after it's flipped back out?
Um, I did not go in and look at the last one to.
Oh, I mean, even the one before that, because, or wait, this, no, this is the second one. Seems like we've been doing this forever. Well, I know my daughter-in-law did because she tried to get on, she thought she could watch it right while we were going through it and that didn't work. And she was supposed to be the rep at the meeting for their teachers group. And then she said she watched it later.
That's made dirty mowing lawn up there.
It is so dusty. We didn't get enough rain to settle the dust.
That's for sure.
And then Dwayne went out today. He was gonna start, we had gopher problems this year. And he seen the mounds there last night, but by the time he got back from Cambridge this morning, he said they'd all collapsed, so he couldn't find where to put the poison out there again, so.
I tried twice. I'm not very good at gophers anymore. I used to be.
Well, I used to have my brother-in-law come and do them all the time. He'd trap them and it was fine, but Terry didn't, he's not allowed to come anymore, so. Well, I took care of that.
That's too bad.
Yes. You know, when Mary Lou was first talking to us this morning about Christmas cactus, I wasn't even thinking this. I was thinking something completely different. But I think if it's even as big as she is, if I put it on top of his, that should work. But the window, Aralween had her as in the whole time would have been on the light. She always had the afternoon sun on it.
This one's on my coffee table and I guess enough sun there. But that's a Thanksgiving Easter.
Well, that's what she said. No, she said Christmas.
So, right enough, it's blooming. It broke off, that's why I put water, because I saw the bloods on it and I thought, whoa, I wonder if they stick it in water.
But I had one, Aralween's so rad.
We'd better not.
And I kept it going for two, three years and then one year it just all withered up. I don't know what happened.
Sorry, Sheila.
Looks like Mr. Jones is kind of relaxed.
I need a haircut, Jay, so I have to wear a hat, because my hair is getting so long.
Aren't we all?
I did shave today for you guys though, so.
That's good. Hello, Kevin.
Okay. Where is it on here? I didn't see it.
There he is.
I like that. There's Kevin.
Oh, he's Kevin now.
Can you hear me?
Yep. Way out in Randall.
Yeah. Even with the wind, one more.
Randy, let's win.
The wine boy.
Ah, Brad's in.
Where's the Wayne Brad having supper?
I saw you guys drinking that wine up there.
Ah, water.
Water from the wine.
Mine, I have water too, but mine has coffee in it.
What's all that beeping?
She's setting supper in the oven.
Oh.
I was gonna just do it all on the grill, but I'm not standing out there in this room.
Not in this wind. You'd get dirt in it anyhow.
Yeah.
I have never seen so much wind in my entire, I mean, this is the windiest spring I've ever seen.
Yeah, I think I'm back up in Morehead or Fargo.
It's gonna say. Oh my God, it's just never quits.
It has been.
I know, I hate that.
I gotta figure out how to ride my bike with the wind at my back.
Yeah, that's going one way.
Right, Kevin?
What's that, Jay?
Good old North Dakota wind. That's what we always, we get some of that now.
Yeah, but it goes just like Chicago.
I think my eyes changed.
We grew up in the wind.
Yeah.
Yeah, I haven't even had these six suns.
Yeah, you just got them.
My bifocals just aren't in the right spot.
Did you meet some homeless guy out on the street or what with that hat?
I had lots of choices today and I chose to wear the Twins hat, so it could have been anything else.
Alright.
He must have been in Minneapolis again, Brad.
Exactly. This is not the Dodgers. This is not the Dodgers.
Yeah.
Oh, gosh.
Want another pillow? No, I'm fine. That's enough.
Shelley, you're gonna have to.
My button says we're recording. Is this recording?
Not till five o'clock.
It is. He'll just edit all of this out. He'll just edit all this out.
Yeah, this is a fundraiser. People pay twenty bucks, they get to see the before the board.
There you go.
Either that or you'll play it at the teacher workshops.
This is the social distancing fundraiser.
Oh, that sounded like a Crown Royal.
It was just a good Coke.
Yeah, engulfed eighteen holes today. Boy, was that something else.
Oh, and this wind.
Yeah, yeah.
In a little ball? In a little ball?
I hope we had a weighted ball.
Yeah.
Yeah. Made it hard to breathe, but.
Yeah, I was gonna say. No mosquitoes landing on you.
No, no, they tried.
The hummingbirds are here. We've been feeding them the last two days.
Oh, I haven't seen any on mine yet.
Yeah, we've got, they've been drinking that ours for two days now.
I'm kind of afraid to put hummingbirds out, because I have a bear that likes my bird feeders even without seed in it, so.
They had, they had a bear on the west side of town and they filmed it. It was just crazy.
Yeah, he's.
And we had the one in Randall right at the park downtown that one year.
Really?
Yeah, and they had students from the Dr. Knight that were preschool, preschool down there. Bears walking around in the park.
Hey, Brad?
Yeah.
Brad, did you talk to Brienne about what she saw today?
No.
She took a picture of it when she was in her office. An otter walked across the sidewalk in front of the building.
An otter?
An otter.
That's my wife, that's my wife's high school name. Otters.
Fergus Falls.
Oh, you sure it was an otter?
It was an otter. You, you, wait, ask Brienne for the picture of it. It's unbelievable. It came from the one pond to the, to the west.
Yeah.
Got confused and was trying to go to the pond of the east and, and was really confused. Yeah.
Somebody put a building in there.
Yeah, exactly.
Brad, tell her to send the picture to me and I'll have some funs with the Fergus Falls friends.
Oh, there you go.
Call Brienne and tell her to send a picture to Jordan and he will have some fun with the Fergus Falls friends.
Confused daughter. Yeah.
They all are.
Well, he was looking for the insurance company to find that wood shop that chucks wood.
He was looking at the gecko.
Yeah. I had a dead mink in my front yard this spring.
Paula Camper made it.
Who made it?
Who's here now?
That's what it says on the bottom of my screen. It said Paula Camper.
I see, yeah, Paula Camper. They got you as Paula Camper. Yeah, she's a lot better looking than I am. I know. Hey, the older you get, the more you look like Wagner.
That's scary, but true.
Oh, and now we see Tim.
I saw Bajargi.
Yep.
I gotta see what I did with my.
You're live, Bajargi.
Hi, Brad.
What you saying?
Thanks.
Well, looks like Julie muted hers and Shelley muted hers.
They must be talking something they don't want us to know.
We're gonna have to pass something that, you know, you have to.
I saw Sheila in the background, wasn't it?
Yep, Sheila's here.
Yep.
Sheila who?
Sheila McCoy, the record.
Oh, is she here?
A different person.
Oh, is it a different person?
No, it's Sheila.
Thanks.
But not too long.
Can you, can you hear me, Mark Gerby?
Yeah.
Are you getting, are you getting, you wore a Titleist hat there, Bajargi?
Yeah, Shelley bought this for me last year when I whipped her in golf.
That one time.
I think that was it. I'm not sure.
He's, he's lying to us now, right?
Yes, yes, he is. He is very much lying.
He never beat you, Shelley?
I think we split on the year, actually, last year.
Really? How many strokes did you have to give him, Shell?
He had, he actually had to give me two, I believe, is what we.
Really?
Ended up at, yep.
Yep.
I'm sure I'm not gonna go for one of you guys.
We were sitting out in the backyard. My wife said, oh my goodness, you have a school board meeting and I rushed in here about two minutes before Jill turned it on here.
Now, he told me he wouldn't let you in for a while.
I know. Well, he was, I didn't get in. I'd been to the. I'd been to the doctor's office and had two shots in my knee. I've been miserable since a week ago Saturday.
Maybe he's shooting the wrong stuff in there.
Well, they shot good stuff in there now, because I. Who had that Corona sneeze?
Me.
And you two are, you two better be social distancing.
We are, we are. Normally, we're much closer.
Spray that again? Spray that again?
We got the Crown in between us for disinfection.
All right.
We're thinking whether we should drink it or inject it, we're not sure.
Well, it's Lysol that you inject.
Oh, I'm confused.
I got, hey, Gerby, I got my second Crown Royal one, I got a gold one and a green one, or no, yeah, orange one, orange and blue, orange and purple, I gotta get the green one made.
Brown Royal.
You buy enough, they give it to you.
We're just in the little bottles.
Oh, hey, who cut you, what'd you say, Gerbs? You buy enough of it, they give them to you. Uh, well, I should get some, because I piled them up on my thing, and they were about this high.
You get that one, Sharon, after you bought some, or what?
No, 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 no. I wanted to get the peach, but...
So, is everybody on, is Julie on?
Oh, look at that one.
That's how I fix my bottle.
That's the disinfectant.
That was a good one, Gerbs. Get a bottle of Crown Royal with a spray top on it.
Has Julie Lemien joined us yet?
Yep, Julie's here.
Is Julie with us?
Yep.
I'm here.
Okay.
Hey, there's some voice out of her smiley.
That, it's four fifty-nine, Sharon, so you can, or Kathy, excuse me, so you can get things going in about thirty seconds, probably.
I'll watch the second hand on the clock.
So, are we gonna get all the little pictures, or are we, because all we're getting is the one big screen and then our little one?
You know, where do we get the big screen?
That's all we have here.
All I have is you.
Listen up, Mark will tell you.
We got ten seconds, guys.
Gallery view.
Click on gallery view.
Where's gallery view?
You see it up there? Oh, for this one.
Got it.
Oh, now can I go back?
Okay.
Great sun tan.
And everybody on five o'clock?
Yep.
Okay. I'd like to call the official school board meeting of Independent School District forty-two to order on May eighteenth, twenty twenty at five P M. We'll have a pledge allegiance to the flag. Oh, excuse me, got a backup, I have to read the statement about our meeting. Due to the, due to the current federal and state emergency declarations, the Minnesota Directive to residents to stay at home and guidance about limiting person-to-person contact due to the COVID-nineteen pandemic, this meeting of the Little Falls School Board is being conducted in accordance with Minnesota Statutes thirteen D point zero-two-one, meetings by telephone or other electronic means. Due to the health pandemic, the school board determined that it is not feasible for at least one board member, the superintendent of the school district's legal counsel, to be physically present at the regular meeting location, and that it is not feasible for the public to attend this meeting at the regular meeting location due to the health pandemic. All votes will be conducted by roll call vote. Each school board member should wait until their name is called before voting. This meeting is being recorded. Access to the recording will be made available on the school district's website as soon as reasonably possible. Okay, now we'll move to item number two, the pledge of allegiance. Please join me with, for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Move on to item number three, district mission statement. Little Falls Community Schools promotes personal... ...advert... Item number four, approval of the agenda with the addendum. Is there a motion to approve the agenda with the addendum?
Brad Lager, so moved.
Okay, Jay's second. And any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote, Sharon?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, we'll move to item five, the recognition and appreciation, and I'll let Steve explain what we're doing.
Madam Chair, members of the board, this is normally the meeting where we begin at four o'clock, and we host our retirees and the celebration. Of course, because of the COVID-nineteen crisis, we're not able to come together. We're doing our best to, to recognize them here today, but then again, over the course of this week, through our social media pages, they will each be honored and recognized with some, some very sincere words of tribute and, and pictures as we try to honor them as best we can. It will be our goal, once we're up and operating at a more normal operational level, that we will bring them back together and recognize them face to face, and it'll be up to the board to decide if we want to do something at the board level, or just at the school level. So, today, what I'd like to do is, is recognize the retirees as we have them in alphabetical order. Barb Balaski, twenty-eight years of service to the district. Kathy Borders, twenty-four years. Michelle Brecken, eleven years. Cindy Casillas, twenty-seven years of service to the district. Robin Gray, thirty years of service. Mike Hendrickson, thirty-three years of service to the district. Patrick Janey, forty-three years of service to Little Falls Community Schools. Gloria Kofed, twenty-seven years. Diane Cole, forty years of service to the district. Jeanne McKee, fourteen years. Annie Rosick, thirty years. Michael Olson, twenty-nine years of service to the district. Helen Pfeffer, thirty years. Kelsey Olson Staken, twenty-eight years. Barb Stavish, twenty-eight years. Judy Stavish, two years. And Steve Wilder, twenty-six years of service. I know those amounts of years that a number of our employees put in of good, dedicated, committed service to the families and students and fellow staff of Little Falls Community Schools is, is pretty darn impressive.
Thank you, and if it's okay with everyone on the board, I picked up retirement cards, and we'll put them in inter-school mail for everyone on behalf of the school board. So, unless someone has an objection, I will, thought it would be nice to do something a little bit different since we don't have the big celebration.
Amen.
Okay.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you for doing that.
Okay, do we have any public comments, Julie?
There are none.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to item number seven, the consent agenda. Uh, this is an action item, so I, that includes the personnel, approval of prior meeting minutes, and approval of the financial transactions. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Brad, so moved. Or second, whatever.
Sharon?
I'll second.
Okay. Is there any discussion before we vote? Hearing none, Sharon?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
And myself, yes, so the consent agenda is passed. We'll go to Sharon, number eight on the agenda, resolution for acceptance of gifts. Find the right tab here. Lot of tabs tonight for resolutions. Um... Members Sherwood who introduced the following resolution and moved its adoption. Whereas the following have generously offered to donate to Little Falls Community Schools to the Activity Scholarship Fund, we had a donation of thirty-five dollars from Robin and Sarah Holman, and a donation of seventy-five dollars from Jesse and Kelly Stavish. Michael and Mary Jo Olson donated a hundred and fifty dollars to the Activities Banquet for a swimming scholarship. John Zarin, a donation of one thousand dollars to activities for the Zarin Scholarship. David and Peggy Stumpf, a donation of a hundred and fifty for the Activities Banquet for a scholarship for swimming. Green Prairie Township, a donation of three hundred dollars for youth recreation. Donald and Lynn St. Ange, a donation of one hundred dollars to the food program. Little Falls Lions Club, a donation of five hundred to the Flyer Pride Back, Flyer Pride Pack Weekend Food Backpack Program. Fifty times for that. The Spillum Kit, a donation of five hundred dollars to the Community High School for the Spillum Scholarship. Crowing Power, a donation of six thousand dollars, which is four one hun- one thousand five hundred dollar scholarships for the high school scholarship fund. Lauren and Marie Sandman, a donation of fifty dollars to the food program, and also Beverly and Richard Colshaw, a donation of one hundred dollars to the food program. And then we have an anonymous donation of three hundred dollars to the food program. Darling Township, a donation of two hundred dollars for youth recreation. Is the Coach Koch Company's Community Fund a donation of one thousand five hundred dollars to the Community High School for the Flynn Hills Resource Discovery Scholarship? Laura and Rolf Anderson, a donation of five hundred dollars to the Community High School for the Rolf Anderson Scholarship. And Federal Co-ops Incorporated donated one thousand dollars to the Community High School Scholarship Fund. Therefore, be it resolved by the Little Falls Community Schools Board of Education to gratefully accept the gifts. I do need a second for this, please?
I'll say.
Okay, I have Jay with a second, and we will have to do a roll call vote on this, so... Okay, um... Mark?
Yes.
Brad?
With much gratitude, yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
And myself is yes. So, this does pass, and thank you very much to everybody who was so generous to our students. Okay, we'll move on to item number nine, which is reports from board members. Sharon, do you have anything you'd like to share?
Well, I could go on for the rest of the thing, but the whole thing is, for me, is gonna be just to say thank you. Thank you to the staff, the volunteers, and the community. The rough times for all of us, and I know the kids are really appreciating the hard work that we've been putting in. Not myself personally, but I applaud all of you. And I'm just so amazed of how well I watched the drive-through at the high school and the kids getting there, going through the horseshoe drive, and, and all the things that you're doing to make this graduation special. They will never, and none of us will ever forget what you're going on this year. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, we'll move on to Mark.
Nothing to report.
Hey, Brad?
To the class of two thousand twenty, we're behind you, we appreciate all of your sacrifices, and trust me, as a, as a Board of Education, you know, we'd love to make this the best we can, and we're trying to do the best we can do, but congratulations, you guys, you, you've earned it.
Thank you, Brad. Julie?
Nothing to report.
Jay?
Well, just one thing, I'm kind of regretful that I can't hug my granddaughter going across the stage this year. So, the first one I've missed since I've been on the board for granddaughters, or grandchildren. But that's all I got, thank you.
Okay, and myself, I just have been amazed by what the district staff has come up with to show the students and the retirees and everybody how much they are appreciated, and to try to make it special. I think everybody really went and was thinking outside the box when they came up with these things. So, from everything from the long-distance hugs I see, to the banners and the signs for the seniors, and all the grabash things, I think it's, it's really been fantastic, and I guess, other than that, personally, I've been busy with the plant sale. I sort of snuck away today, so I didn't have people knocking at the door, but that's going very well. I had a lady buy thirty-five geraniums yesterday, so I've got about fifteen left out of three hundreds, so... That's my report. And we'll go to Steve for superintendent's report.
Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you. Tim is going to update us in just a few moments on the graduation ceremony and ask your support by, by passing a resolution to, to allow us to continue on with our planning and, and hopefully execution of graduation on Sunday. As you know, we had our first positive coronavirus staff member case this last week. I'm, I'm really appreciative of the response by our staff and community with, with, with the case. Not to ever want to have to go through this, but, but honestly, it went about as well as it could have in terms of cooperation from folks in the community and from our staff. As a, as a highlight of that, you know, the next morning, we had over fifty people in the commons at five A M. to pack about eight thousand meals. And so, that kind of response exemplifies the kind of words that you shared earlier on. Everyone about, about the, the way the staff has responded to this, and that, and that really was a perfect example of it. Uh, we continue to struggle with, with the, with the, with the present, of course, you know, we, we feel that we're doing well, but, but really feeling the, the, the stress and the pressure as we consider the future. Uh, we really don't have any idea what's happening, you know, we always say that when we look ahead to the new school year. I think we'd take that old school year back in a heartbeat if we had the opportunity to start school the way that we always did in the past. The, the planning will, will be really unique this year. More about that in a minute, but right now, summer programming is the next thing on the docket. We have been provided guidance, finally, less than two weeks before we're supposed to start summer programming, which isn't a whole lot of time, thankfully, we had things pretty much ready to rock and roll on many issues. Uh, summer school, for example, will start on June first. We've elected to go with a hybrid model, both at the high school and as much as possible at C E C for summer school. Our special ed summer school, we pushed back to August. Uh, Kids Hideout, which is our summer daycare, childcare program, will do what the governor asks in honoring tier-one families first, but we will open it up to the rest of the community after that, and it will all be fee-based. Um, as you know, in, in March, April, and May, we were directed to not charge for tier-one childcare. That is off beginning with the summer, so beginning June first, which is a Monday, the start of our Kids Hideout will be a fee-based program, just like it's always been, but tier-one will get priority based off the governor's proclamations. Drivers training, we're, we're trying to work through that process right now. Obviously, drivers' training in the summertime is always wall-to-wall. We're trying to balance the, the social distancing, students' anxieties, staff anxieties, and trying to create a drivers' training program behind the wheel that can work. LaJoy in community service and our teachers in drivers' training continue to work through that process. I'm confident that we'll get it to work. Uh, tomorrow, Activities Director Kevin Jordan and High School Principal Tim Bjorgi and I will be meeting to start talking about what we can do athletics-wise and activities-wise in the summer. I'm gonna be honest with you, I know that's a shock for you, but I will, I will tell you that I'm really upset with Minnesota State High School League. They really kicked the can down the road and came forward with no guidance whatsoever to help school districts. And so, we've kind of said, it's kind of like the Wild West out here, where school districts are kind of left to, to fend for themselves. And my hope is that eventually they'll, they'll come forward and provide us much more guidance than they have at this point. Um, but honestly, it's, it's a little scary landscape out there when it comes to student activities through the Minnesota State High School League at this point. As you know, in the summertime, you always have concerns about what you can and can't do. This is a perfect time for the State High School League to step up and really make that demonstrative, and they, they chose not to do that. So, we'll be working through that process tomorrow to hopefully come forward with a, a balanced plan that incorporates other school districts in our areas to make sure that no one is doing anything to get more of an advantage or less of an advantage going forward with, with student and coach activities while keeping in, in, in mind the reason why we're doing what we're doing, and that is the safety of our, of our students and our adults. So, as we plan for the twenty twenty-one school year, you know, it's becoming increasingly evident that normal won't be normal. I, I'm not gonna say it's, 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 it's a given. but the likelihood of all students being in the buildings every day next year, beginning in September, is very slim. So we have, as an admin team over the last five weeks, already been meeting, trying to figure out what we're going to do. We have about twelve or fourteen different options for the types of schedules and student and staff schedules on what they can do. We'll be actually releasing a survey to the staff on Friday and to families in the first week in June to try to gauge what they're thinking, what their comfort level is going to be. First of all, for staff, are you going to be comfortable coming back into the building full-time, part-time? Never, as we start school in September. And then also to families, are you going to be comfortable sending your students to our schools? As we practice the best CDC and Department of Health guidelines on social distancing and sanitizing and everything, what can we do to create a scenario where our students are still coming to Little Falls schools and not looking for other options because we're anticipating what their concerns will be? So the sooner we can get that type of information from our parents and our families, the better off we'll be to craft a plan that really incorporates the needs and desires of our staff and our students. We have set a July 15 deadline for a plan release by our administrative team. That's only nine weeks away, gang. And realistically, we don't anticipate that MDE will have provided us the guidance to be able to do that unequivocally. However, we can't wait. We can't wait from a marketing standpoint. We can't wait from a standpoint of making sure that our folks and our community understand that we're trying to create a system here that takes into account their needs and their desires and their safety concerns for their children. And what can we do to work together? By releasing it on or about July 15th, it still gives us about six or seven weeks to work through all the individual concerns that still will come forward. If we don't release that till the middle of August, there's no way that we can, I feel and our admin team feels, adequately account for all the concerns that will come up late in that process. And so that's our plan at this point. And after we get through this week, the planning and collaboration among our staff and our admin team will really kick into high gear as we go forward. Part of my plan is to host virtual community discussions on a Zoom feature like this, where we can, various times throughout June and July, open up a public forum for people in our community to ask questions, to log in and see what their concerns are in a real-time situation as opposed to writing emails or making phone calls as we go forward. That's our plan going forward. I can assure you that a lot of work has already gone into this, and much more will happen. Our principals and leadership team understands that it's not going to be a normal summer for them. Their time off is going to be really focused around the work that we have to get done by the middle of July to be able to roll this out with some credibility to our stakeholders in the district. I'll take questions in just a second. Shelley and I met today on budget. What I'll tell you is that we will have a budget update for you in the beginning parts of June. We'll make the decision whether we have to have a second June meeting to discuss budget as we continue to work through the pieces of the budget. As you can imagine, I want to publicly thank Shelley for her work in going through an unprecedented budget time as well. You know, we think about the school, and we think about the students and the staff. We forget about the core infrastructure people of our district who continue to do yeoman work in getting us prepared for the future. And Shelley has done just that, to prepare a budget that she's presented to me. We all have a couple of weeks to really pour over it and hopefully come back to you with a document that would meet your approval by the time we statutorily need to have you approve a budget by June 30th. That is my report, Madam Chair and Board members. I'll be open to your questions and comments.
Thank you, Steve. Anything else?
Madam Chair, I have a question of Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Steve, I know it's not possible, but the current guidelines say no more than groups of ten. So does that mean one teacher and nine students?
Yes.
If we, you know? I mean, how in the world would you ever be able to do something like that?
Well, so as you look at the CDC three-phase guidelines for opening up, reopening up, understanding that that is still, you know, 115 days away from the first day of school or 110 days, whatever it is. You know, we are going to strategically bank on what will happen in our best interest. So in other words, kind of like the Wayne Gretzky hockey puck scenario, right? Wayne Gretzky always skated to where the puck was going to be. He didn't skate to where it was at at the moment. We're going to do the same thing with trying to plan for this, Brad. So you are absolutely correct. Today, if we were to make a plan that would go into effect tomorrow, it'd have to be one to nine. That's what we'll do with summer programming, for example, one to nine. But we are anticipating a continued reopening of the ability to have more kids in the buildings, again, based off what the CDC has for their Phase One, Two, and Three reopenings, that will allow for larger group meetings. Now, larger group not being groups of fifty, but we're hoping that we'll get to the point where we can follow CDC guidelines that will allow us to have twelve to fifteen students in a thousand or 1,200-square-foot classroom. If we can get to that level, then we think that we can put together a plan that really makes some sense by September.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions of Mr. Jones? Okay, if not, we'll move on to item number eleven, new business. And eleven point one is Class of 2020 Graduation Plan. And I think, well, we have to have a motion. Is there a motion to approve the Class of 2020 Graduation Plan as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve as Tim is going to present it to us.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
No way.
Brad?
Brad, second. Okay. And now we'll have Tim explain what it's going to be. Thank you, Mr. Biorgi.
Yeah, very good. Nice to be with everyone. I did share the letter that I will be sending out after you approve it to the senior class. And I've shared that with Mark, so he's going to share it with you. And then I'll think the easiest way to do this is just talk through the document. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay. So in short of reading the whole thing to you, obviously, there's the introduction at the top. So if you'd scroll up, Mark.
So we are planning on having the commencement ceremony next Sunday on May 24th at 2:00. That's when graduation was originally scheduled. We'll have it at the West Student Parking Lot. And we're just waiting on two seniors to notify us whether or not they will be joining us. And as you can see in the letter, it's, of course, the student's choice whether or not they want to join us for commencement. In the event of severe weather, our backup plan for commencement will be on Monday on May 25th at 2:00.
I lost my visual.
Mark's working on it.
We can still hear.
Okay.
Go ahead.
At it back.
Yeah.
Can you move it up a little bit, Mark? Okay. So you can see the time where and when. I just went through that. And again, in case of severe weather, and there is some weather looming, I'm hoping we'll catch a break and not have to deal with that. I don't remember if I confirmed this with Steve or not, but we would have to make a decision sometime early Sunday morning on a postponement to Monday. Correct, Steve?
And that'll be your decision. I don't do rain days. I only do snow days.
Sounds good. I'll gladly take that on. So arrival and parking, so here's what we're going to do. We're going to assign every family a row to begin graduation with. So each family will have two parking spots. So when they arrive at the West Parking Lot, we'll have parking attendants direct them to their row. And the spots they have are back-to-back. And I'll provide them with a map. We're just, again, waiting on final notification on who's going to be joining us, so I can complete the map. So we should have that done by tomorrow. So when they arrive, paragraph two under Arrival of Parking, when they arrive, they'll be greeted by a Little Falls High School employee, who will be an usher, and local law enforcement. We'll provide them a parking pass. On that parking pass will be the student's name, their graduation number, and the row that they will begin graduation in. You can see there's seven rows. There'll be forty vehicles in each row. That's 280 spots. And then we'll have plenty of people helping park the cars and providing direction on where they go. The next section of the document is the guidelines from MDE. I included those. They recommend that each household be in a separate car. Carpooling does not comply. Obviously, if you have any symptoms of COVID-19, you should not attend, no matter what. Everyone will remain in their vehicles. Only graduates will be allowed to leave their vehicles during the commencement ceremony. We will not allow any walk-ups, so all guests at commencement will have to be in their vehicles. Number five, we're not allowed to provide any public or portable bathrooms. So people need to plan accordingly, which means. And then number six, you know, people would get creative. If you can load one vehicle, bring in Clark's RV. So we have no RVs, motorhomes, hay wagons, or any other unusual, unusually large vehicles. So. Next section is proper attire. That's the information I always give the graduates about how you wear your cap and gowns, mortarboards, honor cords, et cetera. I don't think you have to go through that. So here's the meat and potatoes, a little too far, Mark. Here's the meat and potatoes of how it's going to operate. So when we are done with all of the preliminary information, which will include pomp and circumstance, we have special music arranged by Michael Shines. He'll play some music as we prepare for graduation, approximately from 1:40 till a few minutes to 2:00. I'll welcome our guests and graduates. Mr. Jones will have some remarks, and then we will hear a special pre-recorded song by our choir. And then Michael Shines will play his Little Falls song. I don't know if you've ever heard that.
Yes.
And then we will present the Class of 2020. They'll come forward in groups ten, led up by student ambassadors. It's important that we, you know, honor our graduates in that way. So we'll do it in groups ten, following, you know, MDEH and public guidelines. Once the group of ten, they'll approach the stage. Steve and Mike will prepare their diplomas. Their diploma jackets will be placed on a table. The graduate, I'll read their name. They'll walk across the stage. We have a 32-foot stage. The students will walk across. The commencement ceremony will be broadcast live on Little Falls Radio, KLTF 960. Flyer Media Productions will be streaming it live on YouTube and Channel 181. So people that are not in attendance will be able to view it live. After the first ten graduates have received their diploma and returned to their vehicles, then we'll graduate the second group of graduates. And so until Groups One and Two are 20 kids, once those 20 students have all arrived back to their vehicles, I'm going to move all 20 of those cars and have them either they'll either can leave the ceremony because their student has received a diploma, or they can get in the back of the line. And then we're going to move the rest of the vehicles forward to spots. So everybody will have a front-row seat when their student or significant kid in their life walks across the stage.
That's a good idea.
Great idea.
Yeah, so if you're Thomas Zupko or Mary Zahouski, or one of the students, Rachel Verkyland, and you're, you know, boy, I'm back here in row six or row seven, which is going to take up the whole student parking lot, that's not where they're going to stay for the duration of the graduation. They'll move up closer after each group of 20. So everybody will indeed have a front-row seat. After the last graduate receives their diploma, that's Thomas Zupko. He's alphabetically the last student in our senior class. When he gets back to his vehicle, we will ask the audience to honk their horns, flash your lights, and play our recessional. That's kind of the plan. Questions? I'm sure you have some.
Tim, how many seniors are graduating that day?
Well, we have 149 students in the senior class. And right now, I have confirmation from 142 of them that they will be participating.
Wonderful.
Seven have said they're not for various reasons, and I'm just waiting to find out two. When I get confirmation from those two students, then I'll be able to put specifically the the program and the parking arrangements, et cetera.
Anyone have any questions? I think personally, you've done an excellent job of taking everything into consideration and still making it special for the kids.
Super job, Tim.
Anyone else? Okay, well.
We have a few other surprises in there, but we're going to count our chickens before they hatch. So we're like Kathy, like you said, we're doing everything we can to try to make, you know, these events for seniors as special as possible. So we just need the weather to cooperate, and I think it's going to be a truly amazing experience for the kids. I really do.
Great.
Tim, quick question. Do we have a video of this that the kids could purchase or get or something on that order? I know they can go to YouTube. It should be on YouTube, I suppose, forever, but.
I believe the whole ceremony will be recorded as it is broadcast live, and there'll be recordings available. Mark can confirm that, but that's my understanding.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing no one will, unless someone has a question.
With the equipment that is being used, I know Swanville is going to use it on Friday night before we have it. And then it'll be kind of a nice run-through to make sure everything runs according to what we wanted to do at our place, too. So that was kind of neat that they were able to, we were able to lend our equipment to Swanville for their school district graduation. So I thought it was pretty nice of Mark and our staff to reach out to Swanville and offer that.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Could I ask a favor? Could you please make the motion that came forward to include CEC as well into that? Into that motion? So we cover both Little Falls Community High School and CEC. CEC's graduation is on Thursday, their normal Thursday. And they are doing a similar type of a graduation, but doing it in groups of two students every 15 minutes. So their graduation will run a lot longer. They have 34 graduates, and they'll be doing it over about a five-hour period in 15-minute groups. So I have little concern about their social distance concerns, but I think nonetheless, it would probably be wise to include them in the motion.
I'll amend my motion then to include the CEC graduates that are also a part of our Little Falls District.
Madam Chair, can I ask Mr. Jones a question? Will that be at the CEC building, or will that be at the parking lot as we're doing now?
In the parking lot at CEC.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Sharon?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So that motion is passed. We'll move on to item 11.2, identified official with authority for the MDE secure website. I need a motion to designate the identified official with authority to authorize user access to MDE secure websites for your local education agency. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair? This is Brad. I'd like to make a motion that Superintendent Steve Jones be identified as our official with authority for MDE secure website.
Is there a second to that motion?
Jay will second it.
Okay, second by Jay. Anyone have any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Sharon?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So that motion is passed. We'll move on to 11.1, which is a resolution. So let Sharon take.
A member, Sharon Baloo, introduced the following resolution and moved its adoption. This is a resolution dissolving a cooperative sponsorship agreement, whereas a proposed agreement has been negotiated and drafted regarding the dissolution of a cooperative sponsorship of a joint high school girls' swimming program, whereas the purpose of the dissolution to add two more districts to the new cooperative sponsorship agreement. Now therefore, be it resolved, the school district of independent school district 42 as follows, that the attached dissolution of cooperative sponsorship agreement be and hereby is approved. The motion for the adoption of the foregoing resolution is duly seconded by member.
Kathy Adamak.
Thank you, Kathy. We will now have a roll call vote. Mark?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
And myself. Thank you. This resolution has passed.
Okay, we'll move on to 11.4, which is another resolution dissolving the cooperative sponsorship for dance.
Member Sharon Baloo introduced the following resolution and moved its adoption, whereas a proposed agreement has been negotiated and drafted regarding the dissolution of a cooperative sponsorship of a joint high school dance program, whereas the purpose of the dissolution is to add more districts to the new cooperative sponsorship agreement for dance. Now therefore, be it resolved by the school board of independent school district 42 as follows, that the attached dissolution of a cooperative sponsorship agreement is and hereby is approved. Fair person and clerk are hereby authorized to execute the attached dissolution of cooperative sponsorship agreement and to make the required application to the Board of Directors to the Minnesota State High School League, and that this resolution shall be effective only until the adoption of a similar resolution by the governing board or school board of the cooperative schools or school districts. The motion for the adoption is duly seconded by. I need Jay.
Sure.
Okay. Any questions or comments on this resolution? Hearing none, then we will do the roll call vote. Mark?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
And myself, also, this resolution is also passed.
Thank you, Sharon. We'll move on to item 11.5, approval of the cooperative sponsorship for girls' swimming. We need a motion to, that we are adding Royalton and Staples Motley to the cooperative we currently have with Pillager.
Also move.
Sharon? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Brad seconded. Mark? Mark, I'm sorry.
There we go.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Sharon?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So this resolution is passed. Now we're back to Sharon. 11.6, the resolution for the 2020, 2021, membership in the Minnesota State High School League.
Madam Chair, before Sharon starts, I'm going to, I'm going to take off. Does anybody have any questions for me before I leave?
I don't think so. Just thank you, Tim.
Thanks for all your work, Tim.
Yep. Thank you for approving, you know, our graduation plan. Like I said, I think it's going to be really special for our kids.
Let us know if there's anything else we can do.
Yep. And tell Shelley and Kevin Wayne Gretzky played hockey. That's that game on ice.
He had the number 99, too, Tim.
Basketball players, you know. Okay. Be well, everybody. Be well.
Thank you.
Okay, we are back to the 2021 resolution for membership in the Minnesota State High School League. Resolve that the governing board of school district 482 delegates the control, supervision, and regulation of the interscholastic athletic and fine arts event to the Minnesota State High School League, state commissioner of education as provided by Minnesota statute. Further resolve that the Little Falls Community High School is authorized by this, the governing board of said school district or school, to renew its membership in the Minnesota State High School League, and further resolve that this governing board hereby adopts the constitution, bylaws, rules, and regulations of said league and all amendments thereof to the same as published in the latest edition of the league's official handbook, as the minimum standards of governing participation in said league-sponsored activities, and that the administration and responsibility for determining student eligibility for the supervision of such activities are assigned by the official representatives identified by this governing board. This resolution was adopted by the governing board of this school district and recorded in the official minutes of said board, and hereby is certified to the state commission of education as provided for by law. The name of the school is Little Falls Community School. The designated school board member will be Jay Spillam. That is my resolution. I do need a second.
Second, Kathy.
Any comments, questions, or concerns? Okay, go ahead, Jay.
I'm not be, I will not be running for school board again this fall. And so it doesn't make any sense to have me out here now as a, as a board member because I'll only be serving on it. Whatever.
Until January.
Madam Chair? Madam Chair, and that would be done at the end of this calendar year when we do committee assignments. And then we would make the appropriate adjustment with the State High School League as we would with any of Jay's committee assignments. We'll make those changes as of January 1.
Okay. So Jay, you're still on it.
Summer Conference?
Your sentence is over December 31st.
Are there any other comments or questions? Hearing none, our roll call vote will go Jay?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. We have rejoined.
Okay, we'll move to item 11.7, which is another resolution, this one relating to the termination and nonrenewal of the teaching contract of a probationary teacher.
Okay, Sharon Baloo introduced the following resolution and moved its adoption, whereas the proposed agreement has been nego, I'm going to write, yep, I'm on the wrong one. Sorry, folks. Had way too many, I was going to say, I didn't make sense, but back to the dance. Resolution relating to the termination and nonrenewal of the teaching contract of a probationary teacher, whereas a probationary teacher in independent school district 482, independent, in independent school district 42 is hereby terminated at the close of the current 2019, 2020 school year. Be it further resolved that written notice will be sent to this teacher regarding termination and nonrenewable, nonrenewal of her contract as provided by law, and that said notice shall be substantulary in a following form, and a letter follows that will be sent to the person. The motion for the adoption of the foregoing resolution was duly seconded by member.
Oh, second, Kathy Adamak.
Kathy Adamak for a second. And upon roll call vote being taken, the following vote in favor of, all those in favor of, my list, I don't want to miss anybody. Mark?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
And myself. And that resolution also stands as approved.
Okay, we'll move on to item 12, which is adjournment, unless anyone else has something they would like to share. If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chair, this is Brad. I would move that we adjourn this meeting.
Okay, is there a second? I'll second. Kathy? Okay, I suppose this has to be a roll call vote. Sharon?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
And myself, yes, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, everybody.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. Stay safe.
Hopefully, next month, we'll be together.
I hit the buzzer. I'm buzzing because I got to head to my sons and start panning.